Good evening, welcome on behalf of Up County Democrats, a coalition of affiliated clubs of MCDCC that brings together Democrats from legislative districts fourteen, fifteen, seventeen, and thirty-nine. My name is Sunil Das Gupta. I host I Hate Politics podcast, where we do in-depth candidate interviews and together with candidate forums like this, we hope voters will have the breadth and depth of exposure to candidates. Today is the second of two Board of Education candidate forums organized by Up County Democrats. The first one was scheduled Tuesday, April seventeenth at seven P. M. Recording of that forum can be found on YouTube. Please search for Up County Democrats, twenty twenty-four, Montgomery County Board of Education Candidate Forum. Thank you all for joining today and thank you to all the candidates for stepping up into an arduous process, opening yourself up to the public for praise and criticism, for convincing your families that the sacrifice is worth the less time they get with you. Locally, the BOE races are perhaps the most important races. The school system is believed to be in transition. There is an interim superintendent in place with a search for a permanent one ongoing. Questions about transparency and accountability swerve. Reading and math test scores are barely inching up since the pandemic. Meanwhile, forty-six percent of the county's budget over three point one billion dollars goes to the school system. Where is the BOE? Where is MCPs? Where is public education? We'll begin with a two-minute opening statement. Then I will ask questions and call on a candidate who will then get two minutes to say their answer. If someone goes over the time limit, we have a designated muter. Please don't take that personally. I will begin the opening statements from the bottom of the alphabetical order and then start the questions from on top and I will drop one down as I go ahead question by question so that, you know, everybody gets a turn to go first and last. All right, so let's begin with opening statements, two minutes. Laura Stewart first.
Hello, my name is Laura Stewart and I am running for the Board of Education District Four. I've been a Silver Spring resident for twenty-seven years and my two children are recent MCPs graduates from Montgomery, Richard Montgomery and Einstein High School. During this Passover, I know some are celebrating right now, I am reminded about Takuna alum which teaches it is my responsibility to make the world a more just place. For over a decade, I've brought that work to leadership positions in six different nonprofit boards, including local and state PTA's, Communities United Against Hate, and political clubs. I've been a lead advocate on legislation in Rockville and Annapolis and have crafted bills that improve children's environment. Our beloved school system unfortunately is in a crisis. Over sixty MCPs administrators have left over a two-year period and there have been multiple lawsuits. The Office of the Inspector General, the very office I advocated for in two thousand nineteen, reported multiple problems with complaints and Title IX compliance. All of this is a backdrop behind real struggles happening in our schools every day. We're still behind in reading and math scores and our children, yet our children are still doing amazing things every day. But schools need to do more to support them. We need better pay and training for our educators. We need to stop putting the burden of proof for special education services on our families and we need to work to improve counseling and mental health services. We should offer equitable opportunities at the secondary level, including career technology. Vote for me and we can act together to bring accountability, collaboration, and transparency to the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Ricky Moy next, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Up County Democrats. My name is Rick Moy. I live in Rockville. My, I am a proud parent, a Navy veteran, and a professional problem solver. My current day job is I work for the federal, work with federal agencies to streamline processes, save money, reduce waste, and make life just better for our, for our federal agencies. Why am I running? I would love to bring to bear my technical experience, my business and finance experience to help solve some of these major problems that MCPs and the Board of Education have not corrected. I'm angry at the current trajectory. I need your help to elect me to help you get back, to help MCPs get back on course. We need to deliver quality education and knowledge, our society's most coveted possessions. Each year the budget gets bigger, however, the percentage for instruction remains the same, about eighty percent. So where's the money going? That's what I would love to fix. It's going to overhead, it's going to system-wide activities, that's what it's called. Help me fix this problem. The path is clear to me. We need to respect our frontline, teachers, maintenance workers, bus drivers. They're getting the short end of the stick. And then on top of that, our kids are getting less valuable education. So that's where I would like to step in and make those fixes. Thank you.
Thank you. Fitzgerald Mofor, please.
Greetings. I'm a first-generation Cameroonian American. My parents immigrated to Silver Spring, Maryland in the eighties and faced challenges of building a new life in foreign land. My father, the son of a Cameroonian politician, became an immigration lawyer. And my mother, the daughter of an educator, pursued her passion for teaching by becoming a special education teacher. At a very early age, my parents stressed the importance of education and the implications of failing to capture knowledge. They described education as a lever for economic prosperity, self-determination, and social mobility. After I left MCPs, I traveled south to earn my bachelor's degree. While there, I also worked as a parent educator in an impoverished community where many of the people were illiterate. It was only then when I truly appreciated their strong advocacy for educational excellence. Upon completing my masters in law, I confidently navigated through various career paths, including teaching at a Montessori school, entering electoral politics, and working as liaison in the Maryland General Assembly. Despite this, I realized that I hadn't done enough for my community to feel content. I recognize that there were many young men and women who have been failed by the education system. It is unconscionable that only nine percent of the students at JFK are competent in math and only five percent of the students at Montgomery, Montgomery Village Middle School meet math proficiency standards. I worked, I joined the Board of Education race to intend ultimately to become a source of hope for students belonging to disenfranchised and marginalized communities. My objective is to bring about a significant transformation and revamp the existing education system in a way that benefits the public education collectively. I'm committed to implementing personalized learning, extended learning programs in the curriculum to effectively address the educational learning losses due to surplus of school closures and also vigorously demand wage parity for parent educators, push the expansion for CTE programs in our curriculum, and also provide the dire need of oversight by instituting an oversight committee in our public education. Thank you guys so much and I'm looking forward to the discussion.
Lynn Harris, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lynn Harris. I use she/her pronouns. And for the past three years, it's been my privilege to serve as an at-large member on the Board of Education. A physician I sought in two thousand twenty because I had been a longtime customer of the system and education advocate in the system and since two thousand sixteen, a teacher in the system, teaching medical science at Thomas Edison High School of Technology. And through my work as an advocate in MCCPTA where I served as the Vice President of Education, Vice President of Advocacy, and also as president for three years, I got to know about this wide diverse county. Our twenty-five school clusters are now two hundred and eleven schools by working on issues with families, with students, with teachers and staff and working alongside the offices, departments, and divisions of MCPs to try to make that work more collaborative, more pragmatic, and more transparent. I truly believe in a windows and mirrors school system, that affirmative and inclusive work that we're trying to do to ensure that every student in every classroom feels safe and welcome and valued being exactly who they are and sees themselves and their culture and their experiences reflected in the curriculum they're taught and the stories that they read, but they also gain a wider understanding of individuals and people whose experiences and culture is different from their own because that's the way we create critical thinking problem solvers who see value in everyone and are really and truly ready for college, career, and community as soon as they leave us. I see we have problems we need to fix, but we can't lose sight of the good things that are happening in our school system. I focus every day on the pragmatic things we knew, need to do to analyze and fairly fix the problems, but never lose sight of the great things to celebrate, working alongside the amazing students in this system. And I look forward to the conversation. Thank you.
Shebra Evans, please.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I am Shebra Evans, currently running for the District Four seat and serving in the seat. I have had the pleasure of being on the board since two thousand sixteen and I want to take this opportunity to quickly thank the Up County Democratic Club for hosting tonight's event and allowing us to have this important dialogue. And so my husband and I moved to Montgomery County over twenty-three years ago specifically for the public school system. And you fast forward, we have two daughters. One is a MCPs graduate and we have one that's currently still in the system attending John F. Kennedy High School. I've been involved and have really appreciated the experience that I've gained working at the, working with the PTA at the local and county level, serving in a variety of positions at the county level. And each have served me, in addition to currently being a board member and being a parent in this, in the system, to really know the vast needs of Montgomery County. I initially ran and I still remain committed to equity and excellence. And what I will say about Montgomery County is we are a really great public school system. I've been able to have the opportunity to, to go to conferences at a national level and hear what people are trying to do and Montgomery County is doing it. But guess what? You don't need to be sick to get better and there are always areas that we can improve on. And what I am most happy about is that we do have an internal accountability model which allows us to monitor the progress of our students and that we're also disaggregating our data to make certain that every student is getting what they should as they are going through our public school system. I think it will be very important that we continue to invest in pre-K. We want our earliest learners to have that baseline as they come into kindergarten to be ready. And so I hope that you all will, will continue to understand and know how important it is for all students to have access and opportunity and look forward to the questions that are coming ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start the questions from on top, starting with Shebra Evans. As part of the new funding demanded by the Blueprint Law, county governments in Maryland, including Montgomery, are asking for new state law to attach conditionalities to specific programmatic funding in schools. What are your thoughts on increasing county government authority over MCPs operational budgets?
You know what? So I'm, I'm appreciative that we have the opportunity to have this conversation. We have a blueprint for Maryland coordinator who is able to connect and talk with the various districts to discuss what's going on. As a leader at the state level, I'm able to have conversations with our State Board of Education to weigh in. I think it's really important that the, the people that are doing the work on the ground is a part of the discussion and having a, a great bit of say as to how we should do the programming and the funding. And so I, I believe it's important that we continue to have this conversation and that we're honest and open about how it will impact our school districts. I do know that how Montgomery County looks is not how it looks in Kent County nor how it looks in Somerset. So we do have to be mindful and very clear in what this could look like so that we can have the best outcomes for our students. So I do, I'm very happy and, and willing to support the blueprint because I think it has a lot of great opportunities for us to do some good work, particularly around our community schools, right? But I do think it's going to take a lot of continued conversation for us to share what that looks like in terms of programming and funding for our school systems because at, after a certain point, we will have to be able to fund these programs. So I think it's real, it's really important for us to continue to have the conversations about the impact that we, we foresee. But I do know that one thing that Montgomery County did very well is before the blueprint became law, that we, that the work that was being done was early, around pre-K and putting a lot of things in motion so that it wouldn't be as heavy of a lift for Montgomery County. But it will be important to continue to have the conversations.
Thank you. Lynn Harris, please.
Such a great question. Yeah, I think the key when it comes to fully implementing the Blueprint for Maryland's Future to accomplish the goals for which that massive piece of legislation fed by years' worth of analysis and, and evaluation is that we be transparent and we be clear and we share information clearly and directly with the Accountability and Implementation Board who's charged with, with, with monitoring how school systems are doing and implementing the Blueprint's five pillars and the individual provisions therein, but also looking at how we are not only sharing our data and our information and telling our story to the, yeah, the AIB, but also how we are collecting our data, sharing our information, and telling our story with our county partners who are responsible for allocating the, ultimately, the amount of money that is directed to MCPs to achieve the blueprint and our other goals. And so I don't know that I, I think we need to give county governments more authority to direct how the money is spent. I think we need to make sure that we are good partners with our county government, our county council, our county executive, and showing them directly how we are using that money, how it's impacting students, how we are looking to, to evolve the way that we teach to make sure we are meeting the needs of our individual students and the changing, and let's be clear, the population inside our school systems right now is ever-changing and the school, you know, our demographics and our, the students in our schools right now just look nothing like the students that were in our schools twenty years ago. And that, that's not just because of the pandemic. So it's all about transparency and partnership.
Thank you. Fitzgerald Mofor, please.
Yeah, so I firmly believe that MCPs currently has full dominion over the appropriations of funds in their school system even despite the Blueprint Plan of Education. I also have some issues I take in terms of the funding and the subsidization for the Blueprint Plan of Education specifically. Let's start with one, pillar one, with early education. I actually would ask the state in Annapolis to subsidize and spend and send more funding for early childhood education. I believe it's only about forty-one to fifty million for preschool and we still haven't had access to universal pre, pre-K for early childhood education to mitigate the achievement gap on the onset of education technically. And secondly, there's a strong problem with implementation also too with higher diversity or prioritized diversity in teachers, starting in two thousand twenty-six. That blueprint essentially states that all entry-level teachers will receive sixty thousand per year on onset of their career, but the problem is there isn't standard specifically for support staff. And I comprehend that that goes through the collective bargaining agreement with SEIU local five hundred, et cetera, and so on. But I also would like to see that blueprint for education have a comprehensive plan for support staff and parent educators there too also. But we have plenty of dominion over the appropriations of funds there. What we actually need is true transparency and oversight. We see constantly monies from instructional salaries getting pushed out to different, you know, school spending. And that's something that MCPs does have dominion over and we have to end those practices. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Moy, please.
Thank you. So the question is, if I understand it correctly, should we involve the county council in making budgetary decisions for the Board of Education or on behalf of the Board of Education? My answer is simply no. The Board of Education is solely responsible for creating the, or approving the curriculum, making policy for the education, and then implementing an oversight. The county council has enough layers of work they need to work on that they, that we simply don't need them adding another layer of bureaucracy to how we manage our system. What we want is less layers of bureaucracy, more money directly going to programs that help for college and career readiness, early childhood education. That is something that is solely within the Board of Education's purview. So ironically, one of the pillars is governance and accountability. It's there because trust is lacking. We're worried, the point of this question was that why should we involve county council, county council or some other form of government? Is because we're worried that money is not going to be spent where it's supposed to be spent. And right now, that's a legitimate worry. I'm worried about that. So if I don't get elected, then I would want more external oversight because it's simply not happening right now. If, if adding money was the solution, then the last thirteen years, we would have been much better off than where, where we are now. We've increased by over a billion dollars, yet our students are not college-ready. As the Naval Academy's Admissions Officer for Rockville and Richard Montgomery, am I out of time?
Yes, you are out of time. Thank you. Laura Stewart, please.
Hello, thank you for this question. I did support the Transparency in Education Spending Act, which is HB one-one-one-five, SB one-oh-two-six that passed in Annapolis and will be, I expect to be signed by the governor. Jared Solomon helped with that bill. And what it does is just enables county council who's writing the check to see more of where the money is going. And also there's a section that includes a public website. So everyone can see where money is going and I, I think that's a great idea. So it helps them with the oversight. It doesn't really mean that they're going to direct where the money's going. It does help them know that where they're writing the check is going to where they think it's going. So that level of working together with the county council, I think, has been lacking somewhat. This is why two Montgomery County legislators put the bill in. Also Julie Palakovich Carr, so as far as our spending, Montgomery County actually has slipped a little bit in pure, per pupil spending in the state. So that is something we should look at too. We need to use our money wisely. And this kind of transparency can help with that. And I hope when I'm on the board, I can bring that level of transparency to these kinds of standards that they're working on at the state level. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll begin the next question with Lynn Harris. Absenteeism is a big problem in MCPs as elsewhere. Do you know of other school systems that have successfully addressed the problem and what strategies did they adopt? The question is about other best practices from elsewhere.
Yeah, thanks for the question. I actually was doing some research on this just the other day when I was looking at data from systems across the country, looking at our, our, our post-pandemic achievement data and controlling that against how long school systems were closed and what seemed to be the, the hindrances and the, the benefits to student achievement recovery based on sort of some of those factors that were in play. And it seemed very clear to me in looking at that, that, that attendance challenges are, are universal. But some school systems have really done a really good job of, of, of doing some correction and getting their students back into the classroom. And one of the things that is most effective, which is a strategy that MCPs is using, but in a system our size is a little difficult to bring to scale, is simply direct engagement with families, including home visits, when you see that a student isn't showing up. And engaging the family in that conversation about why it's important for students to attend school, how families can be more directly connected to the school in helping their student succeed, helping ensure their student gets the supports that they might need to achieve maximally and ensuring that the, the, the two-way communication between the school and the family is maximized based on the, the family's communication habits, preferences, language, to make sure that we really and truly are meeting families where they are. Because what I've been seeing as I do some reading is there seems to be a trend and it's interesting how quickly habits change in forgetting why it is important for students to be in school and why it is now safe for them to be in school as we move past the pandemic.
Thank you. Fitzgerald Mofor, please.
Yes, so unfortunately, due to surplus and extended school closures, students and families had the idea that school was no longer essential. And to kind of counteract and mitigate that way of thinking and that precedence that was set, we have to institute, strong and expand our current technical education curriculum. And I also would like to see more technical education schools that are tent to mount to Thomas Edison or Seneca Valley or Wheaton High School. Studies and data has showed that erecting a very strong, probable tangible learning curriculum will rebuild overall confidence that students have within the education system. Secondly, students also need support staff and extended learning opportunities. We know that emphatically this is incentive for students to be excited about attending school, so to speak. And lastly, we need parental collaboration. We show that parental collaboration within the curriculum, within the school system, the substantive way ultimately leads to over a higher excitement in terms of attending school, finishing school and putting every student on the pathway of graduation. I can't point out to schools, to school, different, school districts specifically that has implemented these ideals because we're still in this antiquated way of thinking where vocational learning is for the students that are at behavioral issues, come from marginalized communities, which is not necessarily true. Vocational learning can be effectual and beneficial to all students from different walks of life. So essentially to mitigate the truancy and absenteeism that we're seeing here, we really have to prioritize career, technical education, after-school opportunities, and substantive collaboration with the parents.
Thank you. Rick Moy, please.
Thanks. So as I understand, the question is what other school systems have taken action? And perhaps what might be a solution we can adopt? Well, I've had the chance to talk to a administrator from DCPS. She's a close friend of mine. We also, she's also a parent of one of my son's classmates. I've also happened to chat with Claudia who works for Howard County Public School System and I had a chance to chat with teachers from Fairfax County. They've had some success in dropping absenteeism because they put an attachment, a repercussion to being absent. As soon as you're absent over a certain amount of days, you get automatic, automated notifications from the school system and they're more persistent. And at a certain point, they actually do trigger a visit. So what, what would be a good correction? My wife was a teacher for MCPs. She had students that routinely missed school for a variety of reasons. Some may be a lack of transportation, some was they didn't value school. There needs to be a little bit of repercussion. There needs to be a little bit of repercussion and engagement from the parents. Needs to be accountability. Uh instead, teachers are held accountable for their students not showing up, uh which is a, I I don't know what teachers can do about that. Uh in on top of that, there's the fifty percent rule that coincidentally recently got repealed, where you could actually miss half the school year, come in and then uh to make up the rest of the the program not to fail. So all these are incentives for people to miss school and very low amount of incentives actually attend school. So we're spending a lot of money per per kid, but we're not getting any benefit out of it. No return. Thanks.
Thank you. Laura Stewart, please.
Sure, um so engagement, it seems to be key. And um I did look at a study, well, a program that was looked at in New York before the pandemic. And they looked at community school model, which we are starting to implement here. Actually, at the high school level, um the absenteeism went down eight-point-three points lower in the New York Community School Program. So I would like to look at community schools, which we aren't really doing and at the high school level. And I think we need to look at that model and also bring it to the high school level because we can um you know engage students more. They have, I have to look at the absentee rates, but I do believe teenagers tend to, that's when some problems with um going to school starts to really become chronic. So um also, we can look at um a recent study that talked about engagement being key, family engagement. The community school model also helps with that. We need to look at the root problem. Why are kids not coming to school? Um some of it's mental health, so getting uh resources to families for those kids to have mental health services. There was a bill that passed that um makes it easier to do telehealth in school. So maybe we could have more kids getting help um while they're in school, so they can stay in school. Um and there's more models out there for us to look at, and I would like to get a full debrief on how to move forward.
Thank you. Shebra Evans, please.
Sure. Um so you said an idea from another um school district, one that I have heard that I really do like is partnering our students with internship opportunities. We do know that there are some of our students that actually have to work. So I think giving students an incentive and tying it with what they need to do for real life, which is to have a job to make money, that that would be a draw-in to get some of our students to come to school. Some of what I do see that's starting to happen more here in Montgomery County that we do need more of is it comes down to relationships, right? So we have a lot of community partners that are providing out-of-school time for our students. And when students know that either before or after or during school, that they will have that trusted adult that they can look to for support and and guidance that will be there, I think that is an incentive to want to come to school. I do know in some of our elementary schools, we find ways to have our students be leaders, right? That might be coming to the office one day and know that you're going to be able to be on the um the intercom to give the morning announcements or to be um the line leader or be given a task in school. I think when students have things that they're excited about in school, it makes them want to come to school. We have the partnership with the State's Attorney, the Truancy Program. I've gone to that ceremony at the end of the um truancy program, and when you hear the students that um at some point in time didn't believe in themselves, right? Didn't believe they could do the work when they were actually paired with a mentor who were in giving them encourage, encouragement and guidance and doing their work and talking about the importance of coming to school. That when you saw that over a period of time, having that type of interaction with an adult on a regular basis, they were coming to school on their own and seeing that they could do the work. So those are just a few ideas and thoughts.
Thank you. For the third question, we'll begin with Fitzpatrick Mofor. School safety is clearly an issue today. How do you balance student and community engagement and surveillance, enforcement, and police presence in providing school safety?
Well, I've been pretty clear and consistent on this issue specifically, and there's a myriad of things we have to institute. I understand the Board of Education cannot unilaterally bring back school resource officers within the school and that will take a collaborative effort with uh the County Council and the County Executive. But we're in dire need of school resource officers right now, specifically with some of the things that we've seen over the past week or so. Uh we saw a student get shot in Magruder High School. I remember attending MCPS, and it was completely unthinkable to even imagine a student bringing a firearm to school, let alone discharging it. And we keep getting lucky and lucky and lucky overall in MCPS. But at some point, that luck is going to run out, and we have to prioritize school safety. Secondly, we really have to reform our uh philosophical approach on discipline. Right now, our student code of conduct doesn't provide substantive discipline and recourse for students that engage in subordination or fighting or bullying or harassment, those kind of things. We have to let students know that we have a clear line and we have clear uh consequences for insubordination there. And the lack thereof has actually drove uh teachers out of the school system. I there is a teacher in Cluxburg that was a special educated teacher, taught in the school system for years and decades that left the school system for that specifically. And unfortunately, we saw members in the Central Office that stating that the lack of uh substantive discipline is the reason why teachers are leaving, that's nonsense. It's not nonsense. It's something that we're seeing here, and we have to reform those things. So the two policy implementations that I really need to see are via reinstatement of our nationally recognized CRO CRO, I'm sorry, SRO paradigm and uh complete overhaul on our philosophical approach on uh discipline and consequences, which uh we uh call store of justice or
Thank you. Rick Moy, please.
Thank you. This is a great question. Uh yesterday, I had a chance to visit uh A. Mario Loiderman's Middle School Earth Day that was being held there. Uh I spoke to a MCPS security uh guard, and I asked him, hey, if something happened, uh what what tools you have? And he showed me his whistle. I said, well, that's 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 very formidable uh tool you have, my friend. So I asked, what could we do better? Well, I had a chance, well, he didn't have a great answer, but uh I had a chance to walk around multiple uh schools. And I'm glad to report that a lot of these schools have locked doors from the outside. So people getting in from the outside to harm our school is a very low percentage. What is the higher threat is insider threat. When I was in the military, I ran the uh shipboard protection uh for multiple ships. And uh I trained my sailors on what we would do if if we did have an issue. Most recently, I visited the Finance Park. Uh that's one of the institutions that our seventh graders get to do for budgeting, and I saw more signs of what to do in an emergency than I've seen in my entire naval career. Uh there's like four signs over each other. So I I I see a lot of effort to warn kids of threats. What threats? Well, they talk about shooting and running and, but I I am more worried about smoking, drugs. People afraid to go to the restroom because there are no go zones. Wh- why is that? Teachers don't have the power. They don't even have a whistle to go into the to the uh restroom to clear it out. Surveillance? There's lots of uh principals that are for cameras, and I've I've uh including my own elementary school. Thanks.
Thank you. Laura Stewart, please.
Can you repeat the question?
How do you balance student and community engagement and surveillance, enforcement, and police presence in providing school safety?
Okay. So first of all, there are tools that we can use um to increase safety uh and without bringing um the SROs in the building as in an office in the building. Of course, SROs are going to be, not SROs, but CEOs will be in the building when they are needed, when they're invited. But I don't think that they, it's necessary to have an office in school buildings. Um there's a lot of tools that we have. Uh, security guards, yes, they they do, the officers do a great job. I have heard there's not enough of them. So we should look into uh asking principals what their needs are for security officers. We also need um to look at the vape detecting technology, more cameras. Um let's implement the ID system, the student ID system that our student member of the board talked about in a recent meeting. And we also need to do an evaluation of the climate and safety needs in the school. So I would like to see climate and school safety teams um with the whole community engaged and actually letting us know what they need and to the superintendent. We also need more coordination with our CEOs and make making sure we have enough of them so they can respond appropriately when they are needed to be in the school. Um our kids can help us learn about what's needed, and we really need to listen to them.
Thank you. Shebra Evans, please.
Sure. Um you know what? This is um a conversation that I think we need to take out to the community. We did a really great job when we held the forums for Fit and All. We held them across the county. Um we had conversations with our students, with our families, and I think that this warrants a conversation with the entire community. Um what I remember specifically is that when the families came to the forums, they had a lot of questions, right? They had a lot of questions and they needed a lot of help and support and trying to get their students the resources and support um around mental health that they needed, right? They wanted to ask us questions. I think this is a point in time when we need to bring everyone together. The CEOs, the parents, um of various community partners, Department of Health and Human Services, our um our, we had our um medical officer there. I just think this is going to take an all-hands-deck approach because the the guns, the drugs, they're not in the school. They're being brought into the schools. And I think we need to kind of get to the, have a conversation about the root cause and um how we can better support our students together. And at the same time, inform our parents on the programs that are actually happening in the school and um just make them more aware and abreast of what's going on and what resources that the school system is supplying in addition to the supports that are out there in the county. But I do not think that um the school system alone can do this work. Education, in my opinion, is everyone's business, and we need to bring everyone to um the conversation so that we can get back to um teaching and learning and focusing on that. But where our students need support and that the school system cannot provide that, that we're looking to our partners, but we're having that conversation all together, all at once. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Harris, please.
When I think about the question of school safety and security, in my mind, when I'm talking about safety, I'm talking about how welcomed and valued do the individuals in our in our buildings feel when they are there? And when I think about security, I'm thinking about what are our actual structures and 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 processes to keep the buildings and the people in them physically safe. And I have to give props to uh Sammy Said, our current student member of the board, who brought forth back in October a resolution on school safety that he had crowdsourced um with hundreds and hundreds of students throughout Montgomery County Public Schools, asking them what they felt like their school needed to make them feel safe in that building every day and get some really constructive and thoughtful ideas from students about what would, what they knew would would help. And a lot of it gets to on the, what for me is the safety side, how welcome and valued did they see, did they feel? They were interested in better mental wellness supports. They were interested in things like like wellness break days. They were interested in in making sure that students were were much better aware of the services and supports that were actually available to them in their schools. And then on the on the security side, they were interested in things like vape detectors. They were interested in things like the 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 ID pilots, where everybody has to show their ID to get in and out of the school. They were interested in um looking into, as we are, some of the technology now around weapons detection that is far less intrusive, but the jury is still out on the effectiveness um than some of the prior technology that's been made available. And I think really and truly, everybody needs to be involved in this in this conversation. I am not in favor of bringing police back into schools, but they need to be our partner if things go wrong. We need to double down on our work with our Positive Youth Development and Street Outreach Network teams because their expertise is in the community.
Thank you. For the next question, we will start with Rick Moy. MCPS Central Office has been called both bloated and understaffed. Which do you think it is and how do you think the problem can be fixed?
Thanks. I happened to work yesterday at the Earth Day with some Central Office members. I think it's top-heavy. It has good people that are working underneath or in within the offices. Uh they're making, they're barely making ends meet as it is. So but the top part, I think, is is pretty top-heavy. They're getting paid a lot with uh maybe four or five manpower's worth of uh pay. Uh I would love to see a little bit more uh leadership from these uh top-heavy members of the Central Office. We do need Central Office to coordinate across the board, right? You cannot have command and control without somebody who knows what's going on. You need someone that has experience. But if you look at the budget from twenty thirteen and then again, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, and now twenty-five, that number has increased ten percent each time or or more multiple percents each time. So however, the the instruction portion of the budget has not increased. So we do need Central Office, but over the last ten years, that part is the only part that has grown. So you tell me, the 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 kids have not benefited from this growth in the Central Office. Yeah, and if if I'm incorrect, I would love to see maybe a little bit more transparency on where this other system-wide uh growth has has taken place. And how has it benefited our kids? So they're more college-ready or career-ready, which I think is the opposite direction. Thanks.
Thank you. Laura Stewart, please.
I think both could be true. So uh I actually would like to see um a contractor come in and do an analysis of central office positions and review um what they're doing on a daily basis. I have seen some of our central office be absolutely overworked and struggle to get everything done. And I also wonder what others do on a daily basis. So I think we need that analysis. I can't see all of that from the outside. And I'm I'm not one to uh spend a lot of money on contractors, but to give um the board some information about how other systems um other school systems that work well, how are they structured? So I do think we need to look at the structure. And do we have too many um at the top? And do we have too many um at the top of the pay scale sucking up a lot of the money? I don't know, I I would like to see how we could save some money. Um and use it maybe a little more efficiently, but also I would like to see um. Parent and student navigators at at central office. So I would like to take some of the money maybe we could save that's not being used well to have um. A safety net when things aren't happening at school. So a parent or even a student could call and the central office would be could help them navigate through. Our bureaucracy, so that's an idea I have for a central office. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Um Shebra Evans, please.
Yeah, so there's always a conversation around whether or not central office is top heavy. And the board has discussed at various points during an audit. What I want to ensure that we don't do is that we don't take away essential staff. Because what typically happens is when it comes budget season. It's always said that central office is top heavy and we tend to um. Come to central office first, so I just want to make certain that we are able to. Ensure that if there's an office that's essential, that we do not touch them. Because we definitely need our central office staff to be able to support our schools, they do that work. And I think that to show transparency, to let our community know that we are being good fiscal stewards. That to audit what's happening at central office. And it does not hurt to take a look on an annual basis to ensure that we're being efficient, efficient and effective. So I don't have any opposition to that, but I do, I do, I do believe it's very important for us to say upfront and often. The staff that is essential that we should not um. Consider losing. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Harris, please.
Um such a good question and contextualized to enrollment. Montgomery County Public Schools has the second smallest central office of all Maryland's twenty-four school systems. And there are definitely um strains inside central office right now with um. Uh positions that are open and because the only job of central office really is to support principals and schools. When we don't have the staff we need centrally, our principals and schools aren't getting the supports that they need. And if you look at, you know, there's been reference to central office salaries. Couple of years ago, we did a salary survey looking at how the the salaries that are provided to our. Various levels of management and M C P S is compared to other systems around the country, benchmarking them with local jurisdictions. And also jurisdictions of our of similar size and found that our salaries are are. Are about average. And when we want to be able to be a very attractive employer to get great talent back into M C P S. And hopefully maybe attract some of the talent back that's left us over the years. I think we need to be careful about saying, you know, about about making sharp cuts um there. But I do think there's always room for improvement. And we have expressed strong interest in having an external analyst come and look at the organizational structure. Of of our central office to make sure it is as efficient and effective and streamlined as it can be. We're also doing a deep dive right now, looking into possible areas of redundancy. Because especially now, we really can't afford to be paying people to do to duplicate work. There's enough work for everybody without that. And so I I I. I think we're going in the right direction when it comes to really being very pragmatic about the way we structure our central work. And I really appreciate the new focus on schools.
Thank you. Fitzgerald Mofo, please.
Yes, I can say unequivocally that the bureaucratic side of M C P S is way too bloated, especially as we see this Esser cliff. R J staff in the central office specifically will be funded in the operating budget due to the fact that we no longer have Esser. I think that's unconscionable while we have a education institution like Darnstown. That will lose half of their pair educators and minimize opportunities for individualized learning for those students who are artistic. We need to stop spending and creating these super force of a toolist extra bureaucratic jobs in the education system. And reallocate those funds to focus schools specifically like Darnstown. Or those four title uh title one schools that will lose that status coming forward. And we've seen a lot of community advocates demand and cry and plead M C P S for extra funding there too also. Another thing also, we're seeing new positions in the office of human resource due to our failures in compliance. We don't need a new director or staff member in this office to not delete emails after a year. Actually take in anonymous complaints. We don't, we don't need extra staff members there that come undoubtedly. Now, if I was a member on the Board of Education, that's something I'll also make my priority to largely cut the size of. Uh the bureaucratic side of M C P S and reallocate those funds, focus schools and focus groups. To make our education system broadly beneficial to all students rather than just the bureaucrats and the insiders here. So that's essentially my answer and it it's undeniable, you can't argue it.
Thank you. For the next question, we'll start with Laura Stewart. M C P S promises to meet every student where they are. Do you think this is a realistic goal and expectation? Consider that when you set unreasonable expectations, students and parents are likely to be disappointed. And staff stressed because the objectives are unreachable.
I do believe we need to meet his where they are. Are we always going to be able to do a perfect job? I didn't know, but we should strive to do that. And I think um, you know, teachers in the classroom. We just need to give them the tools so they're not feeling so overwhelmed. We do need to bring in, I think, more support into the classroom, uh more allow for more breakouts. I think we need to maybe operationalize uh bringing volunteers into the school. It seems that we've gotten away from that a little bit since COVID. There's nonprofit groups out there that I have heard that really want to come into the school to help. With reading or you know, sounding out words, et cetera. When I, when my kid was in kindergarten, I came in and I had, I pulled out small groups. We sat in the hallway and went over some words, so I would help the teacher track which kid could. You know, pronounce certain words or read them, so. Those are the kind of things we can do to help alleviate the workload. We don't want to give them more work by having them have to manage a bunch of people. So it does need to be operationalized in a way that it's easier for teachers to do this. We can also bring in more outside partners to do after school clubs to help kids. Get caught up and, you know, in a fun way, so. I think we can have a goal and try to get there. So thanks.
Thank you. Shebra Evans, please.
So my dog was barking, can you repeat the whole entire question? Thank you.
Happy to do it.
Thank you.
M C P S promises to meet every student where they are. Do you think this isn't, this is a realistic goal and expectation? Consider that when you set unreasonable expectations, students and parents are likely to be disappointed. And staff stressed because the objectives are unreachable.
So I do not think that's an unrealistic expectation. Our um our vision and mission clearly state that we are here to make certain that. All of our students are thriving and have a quality education, want them to be able to go forward. And that is possible if they're each able to reach their full potential. So I, you know. I enjoy this work and I I know this is a great public school system that is doing the job. And I think that um our actions are matching up. For the simple fact that Montgomery County is one of very few school districts that is disaggregating the data. By race and poverty so that you can really get to each and every student. And educational equity is very high on the list here. And access and opportunity is being granted at every level for our special education students, for our students that are. Are accelerated and always wanting to have that enriched instruction. For our students who aren't typically in classes that we see on um A P and the I B level. We, at one point, we were, we did equal opportunity schools where we were working with our staff. To ensure that they had the background that they needed to be able to help identify the students that you didn't see typically. In advanced placement classes or in the I B program. We are paying for our students to take the tests. What we were seeing at one point in time that our students were taking A P and I B courses. But then they didn't have the funds to be able to pay for the exams to see where that would really get them. If they were going to go on to do a co- um college education. So we are doing all that we can to ensure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students in the area of college, career and being community ready. So I do think that that's what we're doing, that's what we should do.
Thank you. Lynn Harris, please.
So appreciate the question around setting expectations and because I. Having the goal of meeting every student where they are and providing them the supports they need to succeed is that's that's. That's job one. I mean, that should be the that should be the goal of every school system. But I'm not sure you could ever perfectly meet the needs of every single student every day. What I do appreciate that we're trying to do as we're looking at our evolving student population, where we're seeing more and more. Students who are emergent multilingual learners, we're seeing more and more students with special needs is looking at. You utilizing all of our resources to identify specific needs and partner directly with families to support students better. And that's using our our people personnel workers, our parent community coordinators and our community schools, our community school coordinators. Our, when we're talking about our our special needs students, looking at the 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 folks in our school system. Who are who are providing assessments to better ensure they are receiving the services they need. All of those external external services kind of come together or need to. To better support the work that's happening in the classrooms. And then we need to, we're focusing, I think, on providing better professional development for our teachers and parent educators. To help them all, regardless of the content they teach or the school that they teach in or the or the population of students they primarily serve. How to better be a teacher for an English language learner, how to better. Identify and and address behavioral challenges in students. How to better identify, especially in the early grades, signs that a student may have learning challenges. Specific learning challenges that haven't yet been diagnosed. And those are the initiatives that we are working on now to better identify needs. It's a work in progress and all we can do is our best.
Thank you. Fitzgerald Mofo, please.
Yes, can you please repeat the question, sir?
M C P S promises to meet every student where they are. Do you think this is a realistic goal and expectation? Consider that when you set unreasonable expectations, students are and parents are likely to be disappointed. And staff stressed because the objectives are unreachable.
I, I'm struggling to copy. I don't understand how this is unrealistic. We have overall a three point three billion dollar operating budget. I understand we have a large school district of a hundred sixty thousand students, sure, but there's. Some policy implementations that we can. Parents and students where they're at specifically. One that we have to actually proliferate more fidelity there is and I sound like a broken record, but I know that it works. We have to spend and prioritize after school curriculums. Um especially with gentlemen like Mr. Hooks at the four eighty club. I mean this and I believe this firmly that he saves lives there in up county. A lot of these students participate in illicit activities, drugs, gangs, et cetera, and so on. Due to the fact that they don't have a multitude of opportunities to their avail here in M C P S. And I firmly believe that if we can prioritize those extra curricular curriculums. We can meet students where they're at specifically, so I don't think it's unrealistic. I just don't think it's a priority right now.
Thank you. Rick Moy, please.
Thanks, Daniel. I've been chomping at the bit for this answer. So I I am shocked from what I just heard, okay, uh the answer is. Yeah, it's not reasonable, we could do it, how with. How are we making decisions and not keeping those promises? So if M C P S is promising to meet students. And the school board is overseeing the M C P S, who is the boss of who? I I don't, I I I'm just confused here. I thought M C P S. Is the implementer of the decisions that the school board would make. So the school board, if they didn't agree to the decisions, uh what is what is going on here? I do believe in what Wes Moore is saying, which is leave no kids behind. I always advocate for leaving no kids behind, okay? We need to set the standard. You can't have a arbitrary standard or a floating standard. It's okay for one kid to do this and not okay for another kid. It makes it too so confusing and everyone feels less adjusted and less accepted and it it's all all over the place. Uh what I would like to see is smaller class sizes. So teachers can have more touch time or one on one with their kids. We're losing like like uh uh mo- uh Fitz said earlier. The darns town school is losing its autism pair educators. So we're we're, those are promises that I would love to make sure we keep, okay? I talked to Claudia yesterday, her daughter's at Weller Elementary. There every year it's a title one uh fight, right? Who wants to get title one, who's gonna lose it? We're gonna lose funding after school programs. We promised these awesome students that they would have some kind of programming, then we rip it away. So if we make promises, I plan to uphold it, but school board needs to make those promises, not M C P S. Thanks.
Thank you. For the next question, we will start with Shebra. Given the answers we just heard, can you explain why the achievement gap in M C P S is actually growing?
Can I explain why it's growing? I can say that um as we were getting to the point of making a difference in terms of. Putting in place, we had done the Equity Resource Study to really see what was impacting our students and our schools and the classrooms. When we were getting to the point that we were just aggregating our data by race and by profit by poverty. When we implemented the evidence of learning where that's our internal accountability model. That lets us see where our kids are doing at elementary, middle and high school. At in the classroom, the district and through assessments, COVID hit, right? And also in that process, you saw coming together the blueprint for Maryland. This is what everyone believed would help to be able to support our students. So COVID took us back, this is just my opinion. We had to learn differently, our our students were virtual. And so we're, we are getting back to a place, we have changed the science of reading. To ensure that our students are not only um. Getting the phonics piece of it, they're really learning to read and um. Understanding what they're reading, right? So we've we've made some changes that I know is going to take us in the right direction. And it just takes some time, right? But what I will say is what what is out of our control is the impact that is coming down our families. In the area of having adequate housing, having affordable healthcare. And having food insecurity, so we're having to deal with a lot of issues, right? That are impacting our family. The school system does not look like it looked twenty years ago, right? But our funding is sort of in the same area, so we have to really look at the needs of our students. So we have to really look at the needs of our students and address that.
Thank you. Lynn Harris, please.
I think there are a lot of factors that are coming into, to play when it, when we're looking at achievement data and the opportunity gap. And I think one of the things that we are really have to double down on is looking at the, the emerging population of students and actually who they are and what their needs are because we have some groups of students who, who year in and year out do, do well in our school system. And we have other groups of students, particularly our students with special needs and our students who are emergent multilingual learners and newcomers who struggle. And so what we have started to do is evolve our practices to, to acknowledge that reality instead of saying, we're going to use these, a certain set of practices to, to meet the needs of all learners and we're going to expect everybody to be able to respond to these approaches. What we've started to do, especially in the past three years, especially when it relates to our, our emergent multilingual learner and newcomer population is acknowledge that the way we've been doing this work for a decade or more has not worked. And so we are, we are wholesale revising the way we meet the needs of our emergent multilingual learner population. And just by doing that, because that's one in five of our students right now. And, and, and it's growing. And so if we do a better job at meeting the needs of that population of students, we are going to be, we are going to be helping to close that, that opportunity gap. Immediately, we're, as, as, as Ms. Evans mentioned, we're seeing gains already in the, with the adoption, the wholesale adoption of science of reading. And we're seeing good data emerging with the new doubling down we've done on, on our math work, especially at the middle and middle and elementary school level with our, with our intensive math content coaches going in and partnering in schools that where the data has been particularly troubling between groups and that work is ongoing as well.
Thank you. Fitzgerald Moford, please.
The achievement gap, it's growing because students sat in front of a laptop for two years and had to undergo instruction. I mean, during the time, we had very strong conversations and there were very strong advocates that repudiated such policy implementations. And this issue only became more exasperated because it's not a priority in MCPS. There are other things specifically like politics, political ideology that takes precedence in MCPS rather than controlling, controlling the achievement gap in a substantive way. But rather than delineating the problems, I want to also provide solutions to as well. As we see classroom sizes increase, students need one-on-one individualized learning. They have to, it's imperative and this can be done with more teachers in the staff. More teachers in the classroom, not to say pardon me. I dealt with this individually as a teacher myself when I worked in the classroom. I saw that students had a higher propensity of getting better grades, passing the final exams, turning the assignment on times due to the fact that they had that one-on-one instruction time. We really need to spend more money on literacy coaches, math coaches. I remember prior to MCPS contracted with a group of non-government organizations called the Livia Group and it showed huge gains in literacy and educational competence in such focus groups. But for reasons unexplained, MCPS stopped using that. So we have to go back to that format and subsidize nonprofit organizations or NGOs that provide literacy coaches, math tutors, and then also end of life learning mechanisms too as well.
Thank you. Rick Moy, please.
Thanks. Thanks, Sunil. Why is the achievement gap growing? If you look at the stats, the same high schools that scored well 10 years ago are the same high schools that are scoring high now. Okay? If, if we take a look at these high schools, Poolsville, Richmond, Montgomery, Walt Whitman, Wooten. That's one of the, those are the reasons why I actually moved here. My wife said we had to go to one of the W schools. Okay? It's because they focus, there's a focus on academics. You can see a clear distinction between some areas of the county and, and one of the W schools, as we call it. I, I feel that the reason we have a big achievement gap or a growing one is because we have bad or poor decision-making by our administrators, by our Board of Education. Sorry, not, not administrators. I actually applaud the administrators of Poolsville, Richmond, Montgomery, Walt Whitman, Wooten for being better despite the bad decisions. You can see they're consistently growing, but yet we're saying there's a huge achievement gap. There, have you been to some of these schools? Well-funded? They have an auditorium. They have playing field. They have the resources that the kids need to be at a proper school. Some of these schools out here are getting, you know, they're dilapidated. Twin, Twinbrook Elementary hasn't been repaired in what? I don't know, 20 years? Lincoln Park High School is, is condemned. What's going on? Where are we putting 3 point something billion dollars? If it's not toward a facility, not toward teachers? Oh, by the way, we had an asynchronous day yesterday, which was really going to benefit kids a, a, a whole lot. Let me tell you that. Thanks.
Thank you. Laura Stewart, please.
Why the achievement gap is growing? Um, well, COVID, uh, basically laid open some of the festering problems that we've been having in our system. And that is that parents that can afford it fill in the gaps that were there all along. And COVID made those gaps and learning and the learning loss bigger, right? So, um, the parents that could afford to get tutors, to get their kids supplemental materials during COVID, kids came back and they were more ready to move on and, and on to the next grade level. And then the kids that didn't get supplemental materials had bigger learning loss gaps. So I think we did the right thing by bringing in thus the science of reading. But I've been hearing about the science of reading for years. So I don't know why it took us so long to get there. So we have the new amplified core knowledge curriculum. I'm very excited about that. I think if we have done it earlier, we'd be, we'd be better off. We also need to get more professional development and for our math curriculum. I've heard that it can work, but not every, uh, everyone's trained up on how to teach it in the best way. We also need to continue to have quality tutoring to close the tutoring gap. Because my, well, during COVID, my son helped uh, some of the kids that could afford tutoring. He made a little extra money, actually, um, to help pay for his college by tutoring kids and calculus. And the kids he tutored, they did a lot better by the end. So yes, there was tutoring available, but was it quality tutoring? We need to make sure to work with our partners to get, make sure quality tutoring is being utilized and continue to look at our curriculum and make sure that we're using the best. Um, so our kids can actually get the material and close those gaps. Equity, definitely. It's an equity issue. Thanks.
Thank you. So this is probably the last question and we'll start with Lynn Harris with this. In light of the Biedelman case, how would you change whistleblower protections in MCPS? Whistleblower protections?
Well, I, I mean, I think what we have to do is create a system that is obvious, easy to use, safe, and that is open to anyone who feels like they need to, to make a complaint to the system. We've already refined and reformed some of our systems that will ensure that all complaints, regardless of anonymity, regardless of level of detail, will be investigated and even if an investig, if a complaint comes in that lacks the necessary detail for, for a true investigation to begin, it's going to be logged and tracked in case other circumstances arise where it, it creates, I, you know, perhaps evidence of, of a pattern. I, I have to say that I am, I, I'm not clear that there have been, individuals have raised complaints and been targeted and retaliated against. The, the, what came clear to me during the investigation of the Biedelman matter, which, you know, that was sort of a symptom of a bigger problem, was that we lacked coherency in the way we, we took in claims, tracked claims, monitored claims, investigated claims. We didn't have consistency when it came to our approach to collateral and anonymous complaints. All issues that have, uh, are part and parcel of the ongoing reform in our Department of Compliance and Investigation. And so the companion piece to that, when you create a system that is, that is open, that is obvious, that is easy for people to use, which is well-known, which provides people some feedback on the, on the processing of their complaint, is that we also have to make sure we're getting feedback from the individuals who put those complaints forward to the extent we can gather it to make sure they are not receiving any repercussions from the complaints that they elevate. Because complaints will make us better if we invest.
Fitzgerald Moford, please.
Yes, we certainly have seen retribution, intimidation for whistleblowers, so to speak, specifically Mr. Colleen Walker, who was a member in the Department of Compliance and Investigations and found out there was sexual harassment going on in this case specifically. And unfortunately, Mr. Walker was subsequently taken off this case and reprimanded by senior officials in MCPS. Now ways to mitigate some of those issues there is instituting an oversight committee and have witnesses testify under oath. I know people always articulate, you can't do that. The county council only has such privileges. But this would be a collaborative effort that we would need the state attorney, Montgomery County, Montgomery County Police Department, Board of Education and the County Council to erect such innovative solutions that we haven't seen in the past. Secondly, if that's something that everyone is strongly opposed to, I'm willing to build a consensus. I'm willing to make negotiations. I also would like to see that ending the practice of utilizing law firms like Jackson and Lewis to conduct investigations on such administrative malfeasance. And we have to, if possible, allow the Office of Inspector General to, you know, essentially control all investigations and malfeasance that we see. And we can also implement and erect some of the guidance and solutions that we've seen from the County Council too also.
Thank you. Rick Moy, please.
Thanks. Well, I, I wish I had more information on the Biedelman case. Uh, I read the redacted, the heavily redacted version and then the subsequent, uh, less redacted version. Uh, but what I understood from all the exhibits was that uh, there was 18 counts or 18 different allegations of, of harassment. And I remember reading there were at least five different methods that they were, uh, reported, including a state one, state-run complaint system. And they all came into MCPS and then suddenly nobody heard of them ever again. So I think the easiest way, I guess, was to ignore it. So I don't know if there was any tracking or, uh, all these great ideas I'm hearing now, tracking, consistency or, or whatnot. Uh, nobody knew about it. They were never looked at. If I ever get to the council, that's one of the, I mean, sorry, the council, the Board of Education, I would always at every meeting ask, do we have any risks? Do we have any complaints? Are we addressing stuff that needs to be looked at? Uh, and, and having been a military veteran, fitness reports are very important to promotion. If you're not fit for the next role, you don't get promoted. So I'm, I'm so confused how, how this all blew past. What would I do? What would I do? Okay. Well, whistleblowers can be anonymous. I, I, I don't know how we can be more clear about that. You don't have to disclose who you are. Uh, so, uh, and if you do whistleblow, yes, you will be protected. Because you have the right to a, a safe workplace. We talked about that. This is our workplace. You have the right to be comfortable and do your job. Thanks.
Laura Stewart, please.
Sure. Um, of course whistleblowers should be protected. Um, I would like to see the new superintendent, whoever that will be, have an open door policy. So if a whistleblower doesn't seem to be getting somewhere in the normal channels or anyone that they could alert the top of the system. So there's not, you know, sometimes there's so many layers to get there that, uh, the person that actually needs to know doesn't know. Um, I also would like to see the Board of Education, I'm looking into this, having a lawyer report directly to the Board of Education. Right now, the, all the lawyers for the councils, the council works for, um, the superintendent. And I know that we do have sometimes someone on retainer to go to the BOE. But I think if someone was there all the time to counsel the BOE that, and that person can also be used to help with drafting policies as well, different kinds of work. But would report directly to the president of the BOE. Just some more delineation between MCPS and the superintendent and the BOE for layer of protection. So right now, I mean, it seemed like from the outside that there might have been too many people protecting each other. Uh, that's what it looked like and we need to make sure that um, atmosphere of protection is replaced with transparency, openness and, um, an open door policy.
Thank you. Shebra Evans, please.
Sure. So Mr. Doctor, just could you repeat the question again?
In light of the Biedelman case, how would you improve or right whistleblower protections in MCPS?
Okay. So how to improve whistleblower protection? That would be making clear what the pathway is to putting forward a complaint, whether it's anonymous or, um, you just filing that complaint and that's what, um, that work has been all along since this has, um, all been unveiled, that we have to do a better job at letting people know what the process is. And then as policymakers, just ensuring that there's a policy in place to protect whistleblowers, right? So one of the things that the, the board has done is put forward a policy GEA on, um, MCPS or on appointments with MCPS leaders. And that's being more clear of what the timeline and criteria is. So just ensuring that, um, the pathway to putting forward a complaint is clear. Um, we did hear from our community and we were able to test it that our website can be a little bit cumbersome and not easy to see how to get to where you need to. So just being clear at how you go about filing a complaint and knowing that when you file that complaint, whether it's anonymous or not, that, um, there, that it will be tracked, it will be logged, we will get back to you to let you know, um, where we at in the process. I think that's just important for people to know. That's been a bit different. In addition, just to make certain that the peer, the people that we have in that division are the experts, right? That we have people that clearly are knowledgeable about the role and the job. And that, that will make a difference and, um, provide us that additional support that, um, was missing. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all for today. You can find the recording of the previous forum and this one on YouTube. For this one, it'd be a few days, but the first one is already on. Please search for Up County Democrats 2024 Montgomery County Board of Education Candidate Forum. From the Up County Democrats, thank you to those who joined and to all the candidates for taking the time. Good luck in the campaign.